I want to call the August 19th, 2025 regular scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the prayer and Commissioner White's going to lead us in the pledge, so if y'all would, please stand.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, lo we come before you, meek and humble, for your presence. Thanking you, God, for how you are blessed and how you keep us, oh God. We thank you, God, for watching over this nation, God, and the people here, God. We thank you, God, for looking over this board, dear God, as we look upon the night, God, that we see ways and means, dear God, to run this county, God, that you give us the wisdom and knowledge and understanding to do so. And so, God, you got our path, dear God, showed our way. Continue to bless, dear God, our department heads, dear God, and all our first responders. And, God, we pray on the Father God, for everyone in this room, dear God, that you bless. And, Father, we ask, dear God, to look upon our children, dear God, they have entered back into school. We pray to put a hedge of protection upon them to keep them, oh God, and bind the hands of the one that, dear God, has done these countless, and shoot them, dear God, that you protect all these kids, dear God. And, Father, we love you, appreciate you, dear God. We thank you, your son, Jesus Christ. We pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the August 5th, 2025 Budget Workshop Day One, the August 5th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, and the August 6th, 2025 Budget Workshop Day Two. On the Board Meeting, Mr. Clerk, on page eight, I noticed that the spelling for Mr. Tommy Reeves, I think, is incorrect. I'm trying to find that. I think it's, y'all spelled it, and this is minimal, but I saw it, so I thought I should bring it to the clerk's attention. I think y'all spelled it R-E-A, should be R-E-E. Is that right, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir.
On page eight. And then also on page 289, Mr. Schoen's name is spelled incorrectly. It should be, and Commissioner White?
S-C-H-O-E-N.
Yes, S-C-H-O-E-N. I saw that one as well. Any other commissioners, anything need to be corrected? Or do I have a motion?
Motion to approve changes from the chairman.
All right, I have, I guess I got a motion to approve with the changes from Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
How do we go with that? Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. Is anyone from the public present wishing to speak? Make your way to the podium. Mr. Broders, I see you waving your hand.
I'm Keith Broders. I live at 970 Southwest Pine Mountain Road in Lake City, Florida. The thing I want to mention to everyone is that September is a very significant month. It's the month that the Constitution was signed by the delegates in Philadelphia. The Constitution was signed by 39 delegates on the 17th of September, and I'm going to be teaching a course at the City Hall, starting on September the 6th, Saturday, 10 o'clock in the morning, 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. I guarantee that if anyone goes there, they're going to be enlightened. They're going to gain a great deal of knowledge. This is designed for parents and grandparents particularly, because we want to engage more parents and grandparents involved in helping to educate their children, because their children are not getting all of the information they need to be able to understand the principles of liberty and the importance of individual responsibility. So I'd like to encourage everyone that is here tonight to mark your calendar for September 6th, for a celebration of the U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broders. Anyone else, what's that? Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? You almost waited too late.
Almost made it.
But I was about to say, man, there ain't no way he ain't coming up here, but go ahead.
Not after last meeting, no.
Go ahead.
Had to come up here.
Name an address.
Moses Slepper, 14581, 102nd Path, Live Oak. And representing, we, the people of North Central Florida, I, on Agenda Item, Consent Agenda Item Number Nine, I just want to, I don't think I'm the only one in the room that realizes that FEMA is untrustworthy, and they've done some horrendous things. So when y'all inviting them, you know, just be careful you're opening the devil's door. And I prepared another statement, because I was kind of shocked at the last comment of the night, the last meeting, so I had to go back to the video, because I know my intent wasn't what was described. So for clarity and to rebut the allegations that I spoke mistruths at the August 5th meeting, I would like to say that no time did I accuse any of the boards of paying the 2% or the $70,000 year in interest. The chairman's allegations that I had done so caused me to go back and review the tape. I clearly stated that, and I quote, "I am sure that there are some that know more about this than me, but according to what I read in the back papers, it looks like we are paying about $70,000 year in interest." I didn't say that we were. I also stated that I hate to see the Agenda Item Four go to 5-0 approval into consent items without any discussion, which is exactly what transpired. I realize that there are those on this board and other county employees that do the best to attempt to silence me and attempt to discredit me at every opportunity. If the board wanted to be fully transparent and put to rest public concerns, instead of waiting till the end of the meeting to shine a negative light on my concerns or any citizens' concerns, the consent item would have been pulled, discussed, and explained prior to the vote. Obviously, the incomplete back information, along with my ignorance of the process, led to the misunderstanding and concern about the line of credit. There were no mistruths or false accusations spoken by me or made by me, and the assumption I made about preserving the $4 million in principle was correct. The chairman's accusation of me accusing the board of spending the $70,000 year in interest is not accurate. I was concerned and wanting to give the board the benefit of the doubt, so I attempted to contact a board member, a board member, about my concerns prior to the meeting. Since I was unable to speak with one of the commissioners prior to the meeting, I expressed my concerns from the podium, as I will continue to do so in the future. I do not, however, agree with the chairman and regularly recommend, wait, I do, however, agree with the chairman and regularly recommend that everyone do their own research, but I wholeheartedly disagree with the chairman telling citizens not to listen to everything that is said at the podium and implying that much of what was said at the podium is untrue and based merely on assumptions. Quite the opposite. I ask that you and, that you all listen acutely to everything that is said from the podium and do your utmost to dig in and help uncover the facts and help find solutions that are in the best interests of the taxpayers and the citizens of Swan County. My intent was to kick back and chill once we got certain individuals removed from our county commission a few years back. However, there have been numerous concerns arise and actions taken not in the best interests of taxpayers since their removal, so I'm still at it. I've got three questions. I don't necessarily expect them to be answered, but I noticed that Columbia County B.O.C.C. is primarily looking out for their constituents by telling us to pound sand when it comes to joining their landfill. I hope our Swan County Commissioners are looking out for the best interests of our citizens and realizing that partnering with a group that only agrees when it's in their best interest may not be in the best, may not be the best partners for Swan County. More simply said, many of us are concerned that the Utilities Authority is going to cost us more than we are going to benefit, and that Columbia County is going to make out better than us on the deal. And my question on this first one is, has anyone confirmed that the data and calculations used by the Authority's Director to determine the equitable split of responsibility is fair, accurate, and indeed equitable? Guess I'm not getting answers. Two, the second question, has policy been written and implemented to prevent exempt salaried county employees from abusing taxpayers' funds, especially by charging us overtime? And I'm going to repeat that in every week until I get a positive answer. And the third one is, have actions been taken to assure that benefits to be paid to retiring employees are calculated based on the rate the employees was at when the benefits were earned? Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing that, we will close public comment. Next item on the agenda, Proclamations and Presentations. Are there any proclamations and presentations? I'm not aware of any, none. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. We are pulling Items Seven, Eight, and Nine, so that leaves us with Items Two through Six and Item Ten. Any questions, comments, or concerns, or do I have a motion to approve those items?
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. So Item Seven was pulled. Commissioner White?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Seven and Eight are both yours, so we'll talk about those together.
It says a $1 buyback on that. Is that, is that, we own them at the end of that?
Yes, at least.
That was on, I just want to make sure, because those two pieces of equipment, I don't think we need to keep buying. You don't use them as much as you do other equipment, so.
So basically, at the end of the lease period, the option to purchase those would be a dollar?
Yes.
Okay.
Just want, I said, I just want.
Both items, okay. You good, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Or do I have a motion to approve Item Seven or Eight, or any more discussion on that?
So move.
I'll go with a motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item Number Nine was mine. That's Authorization to formally request FEMA's assistance in developing a long-term community recovery plan. We actually have a member of FEMA here in the room tonight, Mr. Mark Lees, an expert specialist, community planning, IRC, community assistance. Welcome, Mr. Lees.
Yes, sir.
So if you just want to talk a little bit and kind of tell your story?
Sure, sure.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I'm not the devil, but I've been called worse, so that's fine. So what we propose to do, if you decide you want to go along with it, is put together a committee of folks that you would nominate, a small group, doesn't have to be a lot, maybe up to 12, but I can handle, I can do this with a smaller number, you know, five or six or something like that. If that, of really solid people who can work together and they're reasonable, and if you don't give me any clunkers in the group, I'm fine. And then what we do is, is meet every other week, about two hours each time, and then kick it off with a big community meeting, where we collect all the issues that everybody in town has, and we make a big list and prioritize those items, and then we work on describing all of those projects, if they're viable projects, and we come up with project champions, funding sources, project partners, timeline, budgets, all that kind of thing. And we put it all in a little package, and you've got a nice little community plan going forward that's very oriented towards taking action. And so it takes about three, four months to do it, and we're sort of under pressure here, because we think we're going to be gone by Christmas, and so I want to, I'd like to get it done before Thanksgiving. And that's, that's just, you know, no, not much gets done between Thanksgiving and New Year, so.
That's right.
That's just a practical matter, so. I've been doing this my, pretty much my whole life, so 50 years of this, and I live in Denver, Colorado, and I do small-town redevelopment planning, pretty much. So I've done it over, gosh, seven or eight states around the country, but mostly in Colorado. And at this point, about five years ago, I joined up with FEMA to do exactly this, and they send me around to different parts of the country for six months to a year each time, and then I stay for, in a hotel, for four or five weeks, then I go home for a week. I stay out of my wife's way for a month, and then I go home and take care of the honey-do list, and it's the perfect marriage. So if you want to know how, you know, how to have a really good marriage, talk to me. So that's, that's me, and that's what I do and what I propose. Let me go if you, if you want to do it. Okay?
Yeah, so I have a question for you, Mr. Lees, and it may be for Ms. Shawe, but do we have, or shit, there she is. Do we have some folks in mind, or who do you plan on appointing, or how do y'all want to, he's talking about Thanksgiving, so do we need to?
So when Jason and I and Mandy all got together, we felt like we would bring it before you guys, and like Baby Vaughn, Mr. Norris, people like that first came to mind.
Okay.
People that are going to be involved in a Resilience Project anyway.
Okay.
I don't know how many people we talked, it was.
You know, between six and 12 would be a really nice group.
We'd have as little as six, as more, as most as well, I mean, there's a backup in somebody, you know. But that's a conversation we can have offline.
So that would, you would be in charge of getting those folks together, or who we, I guess what I'm asking, Mr. Fur, are you being in charge of that? I guess that's what I'm asking, is who's, who's going to round these folks up, making sure that that responsibility is not on us, or if it is, you know, who's doing it?
Yes.
Between you and Jason. Y'all have been nominated to get this fellow six.
And Mandy, Mandy, and.
Okay.
Brenda's hiding over there, too.
Mr. Chairman?
We'll get together and figure out, and if you guys have any names or anybody in positions that you think would be.
I would just make sure we loop in the school board and the city, or some of those represented, people from those represent, you know, from those folks, to make sure that their, their needs are covered, too.
Public works.
Shouldn't we have one commissioner on there, like Commissioner Mobley?
I think that would be a great.
That'd be good. Commissioner Mobley's on, he's already on the committee. So y'all write down Commissioner Mobley.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't disagree. I think someone from the school board, obviously the city, maybe in the health department, should be involved.
It may be Town of Brantford.
Yep.
All the municipal.
Don't want to make it too large for him.
You got me, you got me.
You got me.
Yeah. A good, diverse, broad kind of group would be really good.
Commissioner Perkins.
Well, I'm going to, I still, you go in for a second.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, since it's my job to be the stick in the mud, the, technically, if they will be making advisory opinions to the board, that is technically a public board and falls under the sunshine law. So just advice to whomever's going to serve, that it falls under the sunshine law, so.
Publicly advertise.
Publicly advertise your meetings. Committee members can't talk to each other outside, you know, the presence. If you're on the committee, all that fun stuff, and I would ask the board to allow me, or if you're going to have the, one of the other board members on there, and one of their attorneys, just to give a sunshine law primer to that committee at their first meeting.
I think Commissioner Mobley's going to be the only commissioner on the board, so we're good with that.
I was just teasing about that.
No, you started it, so.
I don't want to have to.
Commissioner Perkins.
I would just want to do with that, I know we're getting out in the sector of the city, but also to involve people in the community as well.
Yeah, I think Furry and Ms. Shawe can loop in some, maybe some community folks. You got any other questions, comments?
Not my problem.
Yes, sir.
Did you open it up? Can I have a public comment on this?
Sure, go ahead. If you would, make it quick, please.
Steve Fontana, 211, 181, 144th Street. I've questioned you before about involvement with the federal government. Make sure you know all the strings attached. If there's any strings attached with this, make sure you know what they are up front. And I want to, the big question is, all right, they're going to develop some kind of plan. That plan is going to come before this board, and the community will have a chance to review it ahead of time?
He just said the sunshine applies, so yes.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Make sure that's done, because I don't trust FEMA either, to be quite honest.
Any other questions from the board? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Lees, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Um, where are we at?
There are time-specific items, Mr. Chairman.
Not on my agenda.
We don't have one.
General business, all right. I'm looking at the wrong one, then.
Sorry. Say you're sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I mean, I thought, I was like, what the hell? I thought I looked at that. Constitutional officers. Welcome, Sheriff. The sheriff is just going to do a little bit of housekeeping on some budget workshop.
Yeah, I guess y'all got the EOC budget, I gave one, you came, Commissioner Moore. As you, if you look on that front page, and Heather had went to a cluster in Tallahassee, it doesn't look like we're going to get the EMPG grant money, everyone, but if it does, you know, we're asking for the 12698. And in there, as you see, and it appears that this EMPG is not, probably not going to make happen this year, or it probably is going to be, is going to go away. So on that, on the 2526, you see where the 81600, we're kind of basically establishing a budget there, you know, to operate, because it looks like we're not going to do the EMPG. And then, but then, I'm sorry, the 120 is if we do get it, and then the second page, the 172161, is if we don't get it. So that's what you're, that's what you're looking at there. And then, on the third, on the third page, now this is, this is not added into, everybody, the 54940 is the county match in the cert.
Okay, so if the EMPG is likely not going to happen going forward, you're, you will need, in addition to, because I think that was some of the miscommunication, is the EOC budget is, in the budget you presented, is standalone.
Right, yes, sir.
So you need, you need, if we do not get EMPG, you're going to need an additional $172,161 to run the EOC without that one grant.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, this back page, is that that 54940? I was a little, I'm confused there. Is that, you're going to need the 172 plus that 54,000?
Yes, sir.
I thought, Mr. Chairman, I thought we already approved this in the budget when we was doing it.
We approved his sheriff's office budget, but inside his sheriff's office budget was the EOC.
Yeah, but I thought this was in it when we done it.
I don't.
Well, it's, well, it's, 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 this, the, the grant, or the county match is statute required, so you have to.
The county match is already, according to Ms. Nina, is already.
It's in, the numbers are there.
You do, yeah, you found it anyway.
You're just pointing, you're just.
Yeah, we're just pointing out what the total numbers is going to be.
Yeah.
But you're right, Commissioner White.
And we have no clarification if we're going to get that grant this year. We've been told to lean towards not getting it. So it's, more than likely, it's going away, even if we do happen to get it this year. So we don't have an operating budget for EM at all. We solely rely on the grants. So this is just asking for us to cover the deficit on the salaries, and then just to give us some kind of starting budget, which two years ago, we got that, we started it, but last year it wasn't asked for again because of all the disasters, and it just kind of got, you know, it was kind of crazy time for all of us, and I think it just kind of got lost in the shuffle.
So if I'm wrong, Reese, correct me. So, Board, I think what, if I'm right, what they're asking for is this EOC would now be in Keith's here, somewhere. There's Keith. This, this EOC proposed budget for 2526 would be their new standalone budget, standalone budget.
Correct.
Okay, which the 17, the 172161 would need to come out of contingency.
Correct, yeah.
Our current contingency, because we didn't include it in the budget workshops.
That's correct.
Okay. Do y'all understand that? Did I say that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Y'all got any questions? I mean, all this is going to come back up at the tentative budget hearing, right? I think the sheriff just wanted to kind of come and say, hey, there was a little misunderstanding here.
And when I talked to Ms. Nina after the budget workshop, she had mentioned that we may know by then if we're going to get it for sure, for sure. When is, when is that budget?
September.
We may not know by then. It may be, because, right, we should already have the contract for that right now, and we've not, we've not been given any agreements, sub-agreements, or anything like that to sign. And I just got off the phone with Ian Gudicelli from the state, and he was going to try to find out from the finance sometime this week, but he, he doesn't know either.
What are, how are y'all feeling about the EMPA grant?
We have that already.
Got, okay.
So it's from July to June. That one was supposed to go away, too, but at the very last minute, we, we got that funding. So that funding's already.
Okay, so we know we're dealing with 172 or 120.
Right, because the 196, if you take that and subtract the 105, that's the deficit that we would be at. And I also printed this off, if y'all needed to see it, because we reran those numbers today, to make sure that they were pretty accurate.
Yeah, Commissioner White?
I just want to be clear. I thought we approved this budget with the sheriff's budget.
We didn't, but they went back and looked at it, and I think that the concern was, is we approved, we were, we were looking at the sheriff's budget, sheriff's budget, sheriff's budget, in his proposed budget.
Okay.
He, this is a proposed standalone budget.
It was included in the packet.
It was there in the packet.
I don't think it ever got circled back to finish the decision.
Right, and then some of the math was, we realized later, some of the math was wrong.
So Michelle went back and refigured it, and then I redid the math today, just to make sure that it was, and these are pretty concrete numbers, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Perkins?
Well, was that doing that portion that we tabled it until they brought in the pay rates for each, each of the employees that we missed this? Because I'm like a commissioner white, I thought it was all approved during that time, during that time as well.
I think that.
EM salary is not included in the sheriff's budget salaries.
Okay, well, I would be confused about it myself, okay.
I think, I think everybody was, and I think that's why they're back here today. It's like, no, they want this EM budget to be standalone. We never discussed it as a standalone budget, so they're, and then in that budget, there was some adding, there was some math that wasn't right.
Right.
For no intentional reasons, just there was some discrepancy. So I think that what they're asking is that this be the proposed EM budget for 2526. The way I read it, a worst-case scenario of $172,000.
Yes, sir, that's correct, Commissioner.
Best case, you get the EMPG grant, and it's $120,000.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And hopefully will, but it doesn't look that way, but will.
But all of this, you're, they're not, look, we don't have to do any board action on this tonight, do we? I mean, they're just here to kind of tell us, if we do something different, we can do it at the tentative, tentative or the final budget hearing later on.
As soon as I find out, I'll let you know, but right now, we, everybody's kind of like, we don't have any answers.
Thanks for clearing this up and what y'all's intentions are. Keith, you got copies of this, so you can, okay. Y'all got anything else for the sheriff, for Ms. Shawe? Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
While I'm up here, can I do a staff item real quick? Is that next?
Yes, next. Let me, let me real quick, make sure. Any other constitutionals? None, no?
Okay, just real quick, in case, I sent you guys an email today, but in case the, anybody in the community sees this vehicle driving around, it is Debris Tech. They're contracted with the Florida Division of Emergency Management. They're just deploying a survey team to document all of our roads with unrestricted access in our county. The resulting documentation will provide a supplemental source of visual evidence to assist with disaster recovery efforts. So basically, they're going to go around and take video and pictures of our roads, kind of like Google Maps. That way, if we get, if we get hit by a disaster this year, we have something that's concrete, and that way, if we have anything that's damaged, we already have a pre-disaster picture, and then we can have also a post-disaster. They did this last year, too, but just, I know that you guys will probably get phone calls. We put it on our Facebook, social media page, so just letting you know if you get a phone call, that's what it is.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shawe. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Items. I have a couple, and I think Commissioner Hale, you mentioned you had something you want to talk about, too. You want me to go first, you want to go?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It doesn't matter to me.
Yep, you're right.
Um, two things. One is, I want to get the board's, I guess, temperature or direction. In our last meeting, our, the board agreed to go up on our commercial can rates. Well, in thinking, in talking with staff, I think our intent there is to price ourselves out of the market. Well, after, because we don't want to be in the commercial can business, because we're competing with the private sector, and the front-load garbage trucks are expensive, so we agreed to a significant rate increase on the commercial can business. But after, after that meeting and talking with staff over the last week or so, I believe we probably should have looked at that a little bit differently, and I'm guilty of it, too, but I think that we should probably, upon staff's recommendation, I agree with them, maybe send a letter to those customers and be a little more upfront, and not price ourselves out of the market, but just tell those commercial can customers that are true commercial can customers, hey, we're getting out of this business, and give them a 90-day and say, hey, bye, you know. And say, hey, by, you know, and I don't know what that date is, hey, by November the 1st, Swanee County is going to start removing our commercial cans, you know, here's company A, B, C, D that we would recommend you reach out to for a commercial, when I say commercial can, I'm talking about dumpsters. Um, that's the politically correct term is commercial can. Um, I call them dumpsters. But anyway, so I think that we should probably maybe rethink that and maybe send, instead of going up and pricing ourselves out of the market, maybe just send a letter to these customers and staff knows who they are, because I think staff's right, they're probably going to get a lot of phone calls saying, you know, that would be negative and maybe that was a better approach would be, hey, we're not trying to price ourselves out of this, we're just getting out of this.
Right, alright.
So I wanted to get y'all's thoughts on that. I think that maybe we should do that, but I'm open to opinions. That's my first item.
Mr. Chairman, I think that'd be a nice way of doing it, uh, rather than say we're going to give that price, well, I think it would create a negative effect on them thinking that we were overcharging it. And I think we've got a lot of other companies like Pops and other, uh, Waze Pro around here that they can...
Yeah, I think you're right. I think for the, for the, the customers that may not pay attention to that, if they went six months and didn't see what we were charging and then shopped it, it's like, whoa, wow, what have y'all been doing to me? Well, we've been trying to get out of it. Why didn't you just tell me? So all those discussions have been had with staff this week, so I, I want to see how y'all thought about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, no.
Mr. Morrison? Yes, sir. Since the board approved it by resolution last meeting, uh, so those rates are going to go into effect on October 1. If it would be the board's desire to delay that rate increase to allow for that letter to go out, then I'm inviting the board to instruct me to prepare a resolution delaying or canceling that price increase, so that way, there's not, because the bills then are going to have to go out with that rate increase.
Well, can we just cancel the rate increase and approve the resolution?
That would have to be done by resolution.
Okay, well, yeah, but I guess I'm asking you my options, our options in that resolution. Can we just say, hey, we're going to cancel that, we're going to do a resolution that cancels the rate increase. Instead, we're proposing a letter go out with this X date saying that we are exiting and customers will have 90 days to find another commercial can.
So, yes, sir, you can do that. So today, that's going to be the first one in September, first meeting in September, October, November, December, so we can say, you know, effective December 15, about make it just January 1.
January 1.
We're going to be out of the commercial can business and so that'll let them know and I'll put that in the resolution.
And I would say, and guys, if y'all are okay with it, I don't think we're losing money at the current rates, we're just trying to get out of the market. Are y'all okay with just not doing the rate increase? That way, I mean, we're, we're taking in the holiday, so I don't want to force current customers to be trying to find a dumpster, October, November, December. Give them plenty of time and not, not...
I agree.
Not double the rate, or I don't remember what, I don't know if it was double, but not give them the price increase.
I'm good with that, I'm good.
You want a motion?
Yes, sir. Well, no, since, since I'm going to do it as a resolution, so just instruction from the board with the resolution to come to...
I think you got consensus.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
And you'll bring that back at the next?
It'll be on the agenda for the first meeting in September.
Thank y'all. I think that's a better way to do it and I didn't, I didn't put a whole lot of thought into it, but anyway. And then my other one is, um, we talked about, at our last board meeting, we talked about using fact for our Ford Association counties, for our search, um, and kind of helping us navigate how to find a, another county administrator. Um, I, I, in talking with them, I think you guys got some information that Manny sent out to all of y'all. I don't think, I, I know that we will not have Mr. Scott's replacement in place by September 30th, which is his official retirement date, right, Mr. Scott? September 30th? 26th. 26th, whatever. Um, the end of September, he knows the exact date, probably the minute. But, um, I, I, I really feel like we, we need to probably appoint, um, I'm open to suggestions, um, somebody on the front row here is our acting interim, so that we can continue to cut, conduct business while we're going through that interview process. If not, there may be a 30, 60-day gap there where we do not have a county administrator for, you know, adhering to the purchasing policy, employee personnel issues. So I think we need an acting interim and we, we need to probably appoint our assistant county administrator, um, to pick up the ball effective September 27th?
That would be fine.
September 27th up until...
The appointment of a...
The appointment of the official.
Yeah, so I think if, if, if it would be the board's pleasure to appoint Mr. Furry in that capacity, you would need a, a motion to appoint Mr. Furry to serve as acting county administrator, uh, up to and including the, the date of appointment of a full-time, uh, county administrator so appointed by the board.
I understand. But, hey, that's up to you guys. I just think we're going to have a gap there. We're not going to be through the process, um, and we'll be without one. So the purchasing policy and everything will be employee personnel issues.
Mr. Chairman.
Open to any thoughts? Commissioner Perkins?
You ready for a motion?
If you're ready, unless anybody else has any more discussion. No more discussion.
Your motion that, uh, our assistant county administrator will, uh, resume the role as the interim county coordinator, I mean county administrator on September the 27th until we appoint a new, uh, county administrator.
Thank you. We have a motion as stated by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
That comes with a pay decrease, don't it?
Yeah. Pay decrease?
Yeah.
Pardon all the more.
And I'm sure Mr. Scott's going to gladly hand him over his cellphone. Um, Commissioner Hale, who you got?
Yes, I was just going to give a quick update to, to everyone. We, uh, finally had a meeting with the city of Valdosta over the sewage fields. Uh, we had our first meeting set up for July 30th this year. Uh, they had to cancel that due to some conflicting other meetings, I guess. Uh, then we had our meeting last Thursday, I believe it was, Thursday evening. Uh, just to give some updates, they, they, and I won't call it a dog and pony show, because they, I really feel they are trying to do the right thing, at least staff is. Uh, the mayor spoke, he gave us some, some numbers and I'll just repeat what he said. Uh, so far to date, about $200 million has been spent on their water and sewer repairs. Uh, I think I, I don't want to hold it too, but I think he told, said something like 2,000 manholes or, or more than that, I forget what he said, that were completely busted or not working, or pipes crushed and damaged, just, just crazy stuff. But anyhow, $200 million already. Their citizens did approve this, they voted on it. Uh, they got a $69 million bond to continue these improvements and to continue working on this in the future. Um, I think there's another, uh, I wrote down a few things from the meeting there. They put in 35 new lift stations that were dilapidated, not working properly, having issues, pumping the water, et cetera. They do have someone in the utility business there, uh, their, their utility director, he's got 31 years of experience. Uh, I'm, if I didn't believe anything anybody said there, I believed him and I'll be honest with you and I questioned him after the meeting pretty hard, so I think their intentions are well. And I keep saying their staff, because, and this is going to sound ugly, but I'm just going to be honest with you guys, they got seven city councilmen. This was the second meeting. The first meeting got canceled, this is the second meeting. There were roughly nine, 10, 11 of us commissioners from multiple counties there represented and we drove the distance. We had one city councilman show up.
Really?
To the meeting.
Wow.
Yep, one. So, um, take that for whatever it's worth. But, but I do believe the staff's working on it. The mayor was there briefly. Um, I think they're going to spend an additional 1.5 million, and I didn't even think about this, but when that, that sludge, that poop gets in the river, it gets caught up on branches and limbs and trees. So they've got another 1.5 million set aside to clear those waterways, trees, so that stuff can flow on down, so it doesn't stay there and stay stagnant and continue to poison our rivers, if you will. So, uh, but I can tell you, multiple commissioners spoke, and I'll, I'll say this, the big thing I, that I really was upset about that we hadn't been getting in adequate timing to me is notifications to our health departments, to our water managements, to our, to us as board members to answer these questions. I mean, that, that's the key is communication and that's kind of been lack of and I made that point up there. So I, I hope we've got that taken care of. Commissioner Adams from Mayo, uh, he made a valid point and I agree with this. As big as Valdosta is, if that was Atlanta, Georgia, or one of those larger metropolitan areas, that'd probably be fixed and they're just not getting the attention they need of, of their location and, and I agree with that. Uh, Commissioner Davis from Madison County also spoke his, his mind. I think he was upset there wasn't more, uh, city council persons there. And he was, I was real nice compared to what he was saying, so, but anyhow, I just want the citizens to know, I know this board, I know myself and then that River Task Force Board, we take this serious and we're not going to let up. We got the gas pedal down and we're going to keep the pressure on them and, and it's not in a bad way. We want to assist them in any way we can, but you've got to communicate with us, you know? Give us some information, let us know what you're doing, let us bring that back to the public and if there's anything we can do, which I did talk to Senator Simon about it a few weeks ago, um, his staff is aware of it and they're following it and, uh, we're going to try to go on up to the federal level on our end. We've asked them to do the same thing on their end, so we can try to get the Georgia and the, and the states, Florida's talking, so, uh, anyhow. Jamie, was you there? I can't remember if you was there. Okay. I just, I don't want to leave anything out. That was just the highlights of it. I just can't believe how much money they spent and they still continue to have these problems. As a matter of fact, while we were there, they had a down, a flood and were starting to have problems backing up in the streets right then and there. Yep. So that, that's, that's how big their problem still is up there. So, anyhow, that's really all I got.
Well, thank you for that update, Commissioner Hale, and thank you for taking the time to go up there and represent our board and, and speaking up for Swanee County and the citizens.
Keep doing it.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other commissioner items? Next item on the agenda, county attorney items. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, three items. First, I see our fire chief back there. One of my, the items on my to-do list is drafting a new contract for, uh, medical director services to be provided for our EMS guys. Basically, we have to have a doctor who EMS works under. Um, we've already got that straightened, uh, ready to go. That'll be, that contract will be on the first agenda in September. Uh, however, just to move things along, we do need to formally terminate our contract with the previous doctor, Dr. Spindelli pursuant to the contract that we have with Dr. Spindelli and for the record, that is contract, Swanee County Agreement 2010-77. We need to give Dr. Spindelli, or Spindell, I'm sorry, 30 days written notice of our intention to terminate the contract. He knows this is coming, but I'm asking the board to give me permission to act on behalf of the county and write that letter formally terminating the contract, so that way, uh, come October 1, we can transition to the new, uh, doctor who will be overseeing our EMS services.
Any questions for Mr. Morrison on that? Can I ask one?
Please.
Why are we, why, what's going on? Why are we canceling one and going with the dip, like what's going on there?
Uh, Dan, you may be able to answer that better than I can.
And, and then also, is there a, what's the financial?
It's actually going to be cheaper going with the, with Chief Miller's new guy.
Welcome, Chief.
Welcome. So, uh, Dr. Spindell's been the medical director, so what, that 2010?
Yes, sir.
Long time, a lot of things changing. Dr. Barker, who is the medical director for, will be the medical director for the helicopter services. We want to have him also be our medical director for the ground services, so it's a seamless transition. Same, you know, the paramedics aren't having to remember different rules when they're on the ambulance versus when they're on the helicopter. So he's a younger doctor, lives a lot, more local, Mr., or Dr. Spindell lives half the time in Maine, so he's ready to move on and enjoy retirement a little bit. So like I said, like, uh, Mr. Morrison said, we, Dr. Spindell's aware of it, so...
And he's, I mean, I guess if he's ready to retire, he's, this isn't a abrasive break, this is...
No, 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 no. He's been working with us, we've been in contact for months now. He knows it's coming.
Okay.
So, we'd, like I said, it's all formal, formalities with the current contract language, so...
I was just curious, I wasn't aware of any tensions of their...
Oh, yeah, no, no tension, no, no, no hard feelings, no nothing, it's just an easy way to transition.
Okay.
Both of us, so...
He's headed in retirement and you've...
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions for the chief in regards to that or Mr. Morrison? Or do we have a motion? You need a motion to terminate the contract?
A motion to authorize me to write a letter on behalf of the county terminating Dr. Spindell's contract effective last day of September.
Motion by Commissioner Mobley. Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, secondly, the board may recall, last, uh, commission meeting, I informed the board of, uh, lawsuit that had been filed by Swanee Ironworks and also the Capirellis and had informed the board that it's very likely that there will be some quasi-judicial hearings that will take place in front of the county commission. This week, uh, the Capirellis and Swanee Ironworks have filed for a special permit under our zoning rules, so there will be a quasi-judicial hearing at our next regularly scheduled meetings. Uh, that would be on September the 2nd. There are going to be lawyers on each side. Somebody tells me a rumor that lawyers tend to talk a whole lot. I don't believe that's true, but that's what I've been told. So, um, most of the time, we notice these hearings for 5:35 and just given the circumstances, I wanted to float it by the board, the idea of noticing it for 6:30 and asking staff to keep the agenda items to a minimum, because I would anticipate, it's, it's, it's very likely that could be a lengthy hearing. And so that way, we don't force everybody to stick around for that hearing, which would have nothing to do with the rest of the board business.
So in essence, you're, you're wanting to do all of our normal business from 5:30 to 6:30 and at 6:30, whatever business isn't done, we're going to hit the pause button and jump into the time specific?
It does have to be a time-specific item, Mr. Chairman.
So, but you just want to do it at 6:30 so we can get some of the other agenda items out of the way?
Just me thinking out loud, it's with the, it's at the pleasure of the board as to what time to do it, but just for the convenience of everybody else who has business before the board to not have to sit through all that and don't know how long that's going to last.
Do you need board action on that?
Direction to Mr. Meeks, because he'll be the one who does the advertising.
Just a consensus?
Yes, sir. Ron, did that work for you?
Commissioner Hale, you good? White, Mobley, Perkins?
Good.
Yep, you got consensus, where's Meeks? Meeks, you got consensus for 6:30, time-specific on that one?
And I'll just ask staff to do our best, if possible, to keep that agenda at a minimum, to make sure we can get through that within the hour. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, and this is quite frankly the most important item of business that the board handles during the year, as everybody may remember, this is the last county commission before the meeting started the college football season. So, as I've said before, it's the best time of the year, kids go back to school, thank you, Jesus. More importantly, wives who are teachers go back to work also, thank you, Jesus. So, those who may remember, starting now three years ago, Commissioner White and I entered into a, a bet where the winner and the losers of the Florida Florida State game had to make certain concessions here on the board, and the way the bet started was, I tastefully suggested that the loser has to wear a tie of the opposing team for the last two meetings of the year, and since the Florida Florida State game is always played on the last Saturday in November, it would be the two meetings in December, and I brought a tasteful tie as the example, and Florida State won that year, and Commissioner White had the benefit of wearing that beautiful item for both of those meetings. Then the next year, and then also, mind you, and still at stake, is that the loser has to declare the dominance and superiority of the other school that will forever be in the records of Swanee County for the remainder, for the next calendar year. Unfortunately, I've kind of blocked out what happened last year when it comes to football, but I have a poor memory of being handed a shame chain by Commissioner White, where he unfairly and recklessly upped the stakes of the bet. And I wore it, because I'm a, a man of my word. Well, I figured, let's keep going. So, Mr. Chairman, here's what we propose, that the winner of this year's bet, the loser, with the chair's permission, of course, will gavel in the meeting with the appropriate hammer, on the off chance Florida State loses, I did buy another one, but everybody get prepared to use this one, with, with the chair's permission, has to gavel it in, wear the tie of the opposing team for both of the meetings in December, and declare the dominance and superiority of the opposing team during their time on the agenda. Chairman White, Commissioner White, that is the bet this year, do you accept?
Oh, yeah. Because you're going, it's going to be rough for you to lose two in a row.
Goodness gracious.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I'll just give up to any of the following year.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I think that was enough.
Do we have consensus?
Yeah, I think, yeah. All right. Is that it, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir.
Consult, next item on the agenda, consultant items. Any consultants present wishing to speak? Seen none, we'll move along, general business, item number, item number 11, discuss with possible board action, preliminary plat approval of Parker Estates subdivision. Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, board members, you have an application for preliminary plat approval. This is a little bit different than some of the other ones we've been dealing with, in that they're minor subdivisions, we do preliminary and final plat approval in one step, so that the, the actual Mylar plat gets signed, you know, on one single action of the commission. Under a major subdivision, which is what this is defined as, because it does contain four lots, you would give preliminary plat approval at your first action, and then no less than 30 days, you know, beyond that, then the, the application would come back before the board for final plat approval. So the application that's been submitted to the county is for an application for major subdivision to be known as Parker Estates subdivision. This is a request for preliminary plat approval. The proposed development contains four lots, the, the total size of the development is 21.29 acres in size, and the location of the property is at the intersection of 96th Street and 169th Road. The preliminary plat shows shared driveway locations between lots one and two, and between lots three and four, this will limit the total number of driveways that would be on the existing road. As I said before, if the board so chooses to give the preliminary plat approval process tonight, then it would come back before the board for final plat approval.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Meeks? You don't need board action tonight, do you?
You give preliminary plat approval, yes, sir, it wouldn't be board action. So it'd just be a motion for approval.
Any other questions from Meeks, or do I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat approval?
That's mine.
That's mine. I'm good. You good? Okay, I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number 12, additional agenda items, are there any? None? Mr. Scott? Item 13, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott?
Just wanted to remind you that we discussed a month or two ago about, the company wanted to put a cell tower at the fairgrounds, and if you have any interest in that, we've, staff's done legwork on that, I think it's important to have the, the vendor, if he wishes, to come to the board and, and ask permission for him to be granted that, if he choose, if you choose to. That way, he can show the location, and then Mr. Hale asked about the coverage areas, then we cover that thing. If you have no interest, I, I'll be glad to tell him that we're not interested, but it will be a 150-foot tower approximately there on the, in that, on the Palmero property, just to the north of the fairgrounds, same, same property that the COVID isolation building would be built, along the tree line to the east, is what the proposed is. So, if you have interest in hearing it, I'll invite him to come, be on the agenda next meeting. If not, I'll tell him that we're not interested. After, if you were to, wanted to move forward, it'd be a city, in the city, so it has to be approved by the city also, then I'd ask the, the county attorney to negotiate the lease rates that they'd be giving the county, so if you have interest, that's great, if you don't, I'm good with that, too.
Thoughts, board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale?
I guess my biggest thing would be, what is the service area? And I say that because, and I'm sure, Travis, you know this, as you get out around the Foxborough, Hidden Oaks area, it's just dead.
Right.
I mean, really, just outside of Coliseum, you start losing.
Right. He, he did prepare a map, and I'd rather him present that, you know, that way everybody can see it, not just on a small piece of paper, but I got an email on that, not excessively large, in my opinion, but especially with the height, but if you, I mean, certainly you could just have him present, if you wish, and make a decision if you like it or not, and move forward.
I, I would, my question would be, and I think that, as a landowner, I mean, you talked about rates, you mentioned rates, but I think our interests, at least my interests, would be contingent upon what the rate proposal would be for him, you know, for them, the company erecting a tower on our property. I know in the private sector, anytime you, you see a cell phone tower on somebody's private property, well, there's a financial benefit to them, so before I could say yea or nay, I would say that maybe, maybe you or Mr. Morrison reach out to the company or the representative of the company and say, hey, give me exactly something you're proposing, so that the board members could, in, maybe in the agenda packet, compared to what, what that proposal looks like, compared to what other folks in the private sector have, have been getting from either his company or competitors.
Right.
So that, that's kind of my thoughts.
Yeah, and also probably, I guess another question, I know they're going to tell us probably no issues, but I mean, how does that affect any commercial build there, you know, I mean, because that's still commercial property there, and water and sewers, I'm sure there's things to come that way. I don't know, I just don't know if it's the perfect place for it, I just...
Yeah, I don't know either, but I would like, you know, before I could say yea or nay, I'd like to see some type of site plan proposal, some type of, you know, rate proposal, et cetera, et cetera, before I could say, yeah, I don't have any interest.
So he, he's prepared site plans and the service areas, he threw a number in the beginning out that was not acceptable, in my opinion, so, but negotiating, we can always negotiate higher.
Mr. Morrison, do you have any experience in your legal career as far as negotiating cell phone tower contracts?
Not for cell phone, but I mean, in terms of, this isn't quite that, it has nothing to do with the fact that it's a commercial contract, it's, or a, a cell phone tower contract. I hate to be too blunt about it, but either they're going to give us a rate that you guys are okay with, or they're not.
That's right.
So my thought process would be, simply have him come forward, give his presentation, and do it right here, either you guys are okay with it, or you're not.
Yeah, I would just like to have that information before he comes.
Well, and I, and I would, my thought process would be, just have him put what he's suggesting in the, in the packet, and you guys can tell him that's going to work, that's not going to work, or if it's going to work, you guys can tell him what the rate is that you're going to need. I mean, it's just, I have no problem doing the negotiation, but at the end of the day, it'll save a whole bunch of time than me negotiating it, coming back, and...
Hundred percent. Y'all good with that? All of y'all? All good? Commissioner White?
Okay, yes. Mr. Chairman, would you want to do that at the September 2nd, or move it back two weeks, since we've got other things to discuss with a quasi judicial hearing?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do the second meeting in September, if, if Mr. Morrison thinks that that Swanee, that time-specific might be very long, so, because that cell phone tower, communications tower presentation could get lengthy as well.
Okay. Only other thing I wanted to mention, we've met with the ministry of staff today, just kind of talked about plans and moving forward, and kind of what people's thoughts are in their current seats, where they, where they are. As we were talking to Holland, she mentioned that last year, we had about 33 projects, and we've already surpassed that number for this year, so we're getting more things done than we were before, so I just wanted to share that, just, you know, that's when we got to bid and do these different, different projects, so just want to share that with you, just some general information. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Nothing else?
No.
All good. We're not doing public comment?
I can't speak to that?
No, sir. Not tonight, you can do it next meeting. I mean, this ain't discussion, he's, he's, he's addressing the board. You have anything else, Mr. Scott?
No, sir, I'm good.
Next item on the agenda, board members inquiries, item number 14, inquiries, requests and comments. I think I started with Hale last time?
Did.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, okay. Just thank everybody that came to the meeting tonight, and do, remember those who have lost loved ones out there, and just pray for, as Commissioner Hale said, pray for your neighbors.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Mobley?
Remember to keep the Don L. Gwynn family in your prayers, I know they've lost, gone near here this past week, but thank you, everybody, for coming, and for the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Mobley. Commissioner Hale?
Nothing, just appreciate everybody being here, thank the board.
And...
Yep. Just echo everything everybody else has, keep the Roberts family in your prayers, as Janet Roberts passed away, I guess it was this past week.
Yep.
And just keep them in your prayers, and there's another girl, we had another accident down in South...
Yeah, 16-year-old.
I'm sorry, her name escapes me at this moment. What was it?
Madison Michael.
She was 16 years old, right? Yeah.
Lost her life in a accident.
Exactly, yeah.
So, just keep those folks in your prayers, it's hard to lose a child like that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I'll just echo everybody else's comments, just a lot of families hurting in the community, I'm not going to rename them, but just keep those folks in your prayers, and pray that the Lord will put their, his hand on their shoulders and guide them through the grieving process. Anything else? Thank y'all for coming out, and we'll see you in, what's the date?
September 2.
September 2. September 2. All I need is a motion to...
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.